I call this the June 20th, 2023 meeting of Lincoln County Northern Commissioners over. Our invocation tonight will be given by Corey Buckner. Corey is the Associate Pastor at Great Falls Church. And he's also the CEO and founder of Always In Your Power. Our pledge to lead us tonight will be given by William Hamilton, Jenny Hamilton, and James Hamilton. They are the children of Will and Heather Hamilton. And William, he will be a fifth grader this coming fall. Jenny will be in the second grade. And James will be starting in kindergarten. If you'll please stand for our invocation and then we will declare our pledge.
All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father God, we come to you, Lord, and we exalt your name. Holy, holy, holy is God Almighty. Lord, we look to you, and we look to you for wisdom. Lord, your word tells us that if anyone should seek and ask for wisdom, that we should ask for you give generously. So we ask, Lord, that you would guide us, that you would give us discernment and wisdom, God. Well, we know that we desperately need you. More than our next breath, Lord, we need Christ. So, Lord, would you be here? Would your spirit fill this place? Lord, would you be magnified and glorified in all that we do? It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, William, Jenny, and James. At this time, the clerk will call the roll.
We have 24 commissioners present, zero absent.
All right. Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Bryant is asked for recognition. Commissioner Bryant, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, we have a man who's not at the chair for the time of Murray Blackweld. He was asking for.
I have brought my better half with me. Tonight, first of all, thank you, Mr. Bryant, for recognition. And thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me to speak, especially first. Seventeen years ago, the people of Lincoln County honored me by electing me sheriff. It has been a whirlwind ride, but it's been a privilege and an honor to do that. To my supporters, staff, and family, thank you more than you'll ever know. I've had the best support you could ever ask for. My family, it's come at a cost, but they've supported me anyway. They've hung in there through the thick and thin and the good and the bad. And there's been plenty of both. I've been very blessed to have the staff that I've had and still have. It has really been a pleasure to work with them. And when I say been, that's where we're headed. So this is not easy, or as easy as I hoped it would be. The Lincoln County Sheriff's Department's come a million miles in seventeen years. A lot of that is due to y'all. You don't know how much I appreciate the support, financial support, personal support, public support that you have given to law enforcement in Lincoln County. We've been able to do what we've done because we all worked as a team. We all understood where we were at. Yeah, we butted heads a whole lot, but we still came out friends. Commissioner Bryant said it best the other day. We may fight like cats and dogs, but at the end of the day, it's our fight. So I appreciate that. We have one of the best departments in the state of Tennessee. In my opinion, we have the best department in the state of Tennessee. We've done our best to bring dignity and honor and professionalism so that we represented y'all and the people of Lincoln County in a manner in which you would be proud to be represented. We've been on every news station in the world. And when I say in the world, I had a friend call me from Bulgaria, I think, and said, "What in the world are you doing on BBC?" So, you know, it hadn't always been because of good things that we've made the national and international news. But we have still tried to handle it with dignity and honor, and honor to the people who were having the problems at the time. That's the main thing that we could do for them. We've seen and dealt with things that no human should ever even have to think about, much less see. These officers have dealt with things that most people's imagination cannot even fathom, much less see and deal with. We had two mass homicides. The first one, there was two sixteen-year-old boys murdered. I went home to my sixteen-year-old son. The second one, there was two twenty-one-year-old girls murdered. I went home to my twenty-one-year-old daughter. Any of that could have been my children. But they weren't. By God's blessing, they weren't. But they were just at the wrong place at the right time. I'm very grateful to the District Attorney, Rob Carter. We have a great district attorney. He's great to work with, his staff is. Our judges are. You'd be surprised what we've had to ask the judges to do during COVID in order to be able to have court, in order to be able to run the jail and make the transports, and still try to keep COVID out of jail. They all bent over backwards to help us accomplish this. And it worked pretty much seamlessly. Had a great relationship with all the elected officials, to include state and federal. We just, about a year ago, put a man in the FBI task force in Huntsville. We're the only county in the state of Tennessee to have a man in the FBI task force. They came and asked us to put one in. And that is, to me, that is a great accomplishment when somebody of that stature asks you to join their task force. The main part of this story, February two years ago, January two years ago, I buried my mother. A month of the day after that, I had neck surgery. The neck surgery didn't go like it was supposed to because they couldn't do all the work they were supposed to do because of bone spurs on my spine. I was sent to numerous specialists, ended up at Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville, Florida. If you've never been to Mayo Clinic, it's a real adventure. But at Mayo Clinic, they did all these tests, and they determined that I had DISH disease, D-I-S-H. And I could tell you what it means, but it still wouldn't mean anything to you, okay? But the doctor that I had was, had a great sense of humor about him. And he looked at me and he said, "You do know that you're disabled, right?" And I said, "No." He said, "No, you don't know, or no, you're not?" And I said, "Both." And he said, "Wrong. You just don't know it yet. You will, but you don't know it yet." Well, I'm still not going to stand here and admit that I'm disabled because I don't look disabled, I don't feel disabled, and I still think I'm thirty-five. But that shows you what I think, okay? But part of it has become a reality, between it and the arthritis that goes with it. It has put me in a position to where I have always taken pride in telling my officers, "I won't ask you to do anything I won't do." And I have driven as crazy as anybody, and the mayor gets the complaints. It's pretty cool the way it works out. Fought with anybody and everybody, got out there with the guys all day, all night, didn't matter, and I can't do it now. That's not the sheriff I want to be. And that's not the sheriff that I'm going to go out as. It has become a reality that I cannot fulfill what I feel like I need to do. Excuse me. So, after a lot of soul searching, a lot of praying, and I always prayed that God would tell me when it was time to come home. He didn't have to hit me this hard, but he knew I was pretty hard-headed, I guess. But I have decided to retire effective July 31st. Thank God.
I wasn't ready for that. When I see people across the state, and everybody knows Murray, I tell them two things. Best sheriff in Tennessee, we have the best law enforcement in Lincoln County. And if he wasn't the best, the Commission would not have done what they've done for him and done with him. But we've had some good sheriffs in the past. But in my opinion, I've seen a bunch of them, probably ten of them. And Murray's my favorite. We do knock heads, and we discuss things. But there's never been better law enforcement, enforcement of the law in Lincoln County than has been under his administration. Murray, thank you. I don't look forward to you leaving us, but I understand. And may Godspeed be with you and bless your family. And Carla, thank you for your support of him and our county, too. I appreciate it, and I know that Murray does and the rest of Lincoln County. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the May 16th, 2023 commission meeting. Commissioner Frasrand makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rolls makes that. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have seen, received ten monthly committee meeting minutes in there. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item is consideration for approval of Mike Lane as our county representative and Dale Pierce, the city representative, to join the Industrial Development Board. Those terms would run through June of 2029. Those are replacements for Michael Dempsey and Eric Reynolds, who have served out their maximum number of terms. What's the will of the body on this? Commissioner Eldridge makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young seconds that. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, those of Mike Lane and Dale Pierce, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item is consideration for approval of the TDEC and the Lincoln County Water Infrastructure Grant. I'll answer any questions you may have on that. That was a non-competitive grant that we received. The water board has been jumping through a lot of hoops on that to qualify for that. They have done that. And if there's any questions what this is about, I'll be glad to answer those. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval for us to sign that, accepting that grant. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Rolls seconds that. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. The next item, consideration for approval of Lincoln County Dead Stock Removal Service Agreement. This would be conditional, once we have an approved budget, that that would be included in for our '23-'24 budget year. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Walker seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Let's have a roll call vote then.
Commissioner Cole, sorry. Commissioner Coley?
Yes.
Sanders? Walker? Brown? Caldwell?
No.
Rogers? Ashley? Guin? Mitchell? Bradford? Tackett? Spray? Eldridge? Nix? Taylor? Cunningham? Haynes? Young? Bryant? Douglas? Guntherberg? Frasrand? Hambrik? Rolls Walter? Fourteen yes, ten no.
Okay. Motion passes. The next item will move forward on that calling for a public hearing. We're missing one document for that before we can call for a public hearing. So if that's produced, that will come up next month. The next item, consideration for approval establishing the Ad Hoc Opioid Fund Committee with the following members. They have agreed to serve Judge Andy Myrick, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder, Dr. Bill Jones, Reverend Tommy Van, County Commissioner and Finance Director Jason Nix, County Commissioner Daniel Eldridge, and myself, Mayor Bill Newman. This is a suggested committee by the state. It is not required. Any suggestion from this committee before expending any funds would have to be approved by the Commission. Those funds are for remediation as far as related opioid problems and try to prevent any future abuse of opioids. What's the will of the Commission on this item? I'm sorry, okay. Commissioner Haynes makes a motion. Do I have a second? Second by, I'm sorry. Commissioner Frasrand, any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, Ms. Carolyn Denton, Chamber of Commerce, report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here on behalf of the chamber. We are in our twelfth season of Music in the Park at Stonebridge Park. We had last week the men of Fayetteville, who did an outstanding job. The weather was a little iffy, but we powered through, and it was a beautiful night. On July the 20th, at 6:30, will be Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church Men's Chorus. So we hope that you'll join us for that. And then August the 17th will be Midnight Jane for our finale at 6:30. And we will have food trucks there, so come hungry. Our official city, county map, and our community guides are in. They are available at the chamber free of charge or in any of our participating sponsors. We thank our partners on these two projects, Horton Printing, Lincoln County GIS Department, and the Exchange Media for their help. With our Student Advisory Board, Julie Mitchell was the recipient of our $500 scholarship for this year. The students raised $600 in their penny drive to benefit Junior's House Blue Ribbon Walk. And for the coming year, we'll have twenty students on our board. So we're looking forward to getting to know them. Applications for Leadership Lincoln are available on our website, FayettevilleLincolnCountyChamber.com. So, or you can get them at the office as well. Last Friday was our Tea Off for Progress Golf Tournament. So we appreciate all of our players and all of our sponsors for participating in this fundraiser. And since my last report, we've celebrated with businesses with ribbon cuttings, with Mercantile on Market, Old Time Christians Outreach, At Your Service Handyman, Heaven's Nectar on the Square in Petersburg, Dunkin' Donuts, and coming up on Friday will be Berry Reef Antiques on South Main. We're really excited about the changes to our building. And after Sheriff Blackwelder, this is a little hard to say. The city and the county, we appreciate your participation in helping us with our window replacement. And we especially appreciate Sheriff Blackwelder's work group and allowing them to come and do this project for us to save us as they have so many other nonprofits in our communities, so much money. So thank you for starting that, and we hope that it will continue. And also Mr. Ricky Pierce for his help. Thank you. That's my report.
Any questions, Ms. Carolyn? Thank you for the job you do. Next item, Budget Committee Report. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee Report for June 20th, 2023, regular session of the Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee Chairman Doug Cunningham conducted a public hearing on the fiscal year '23-'24 budget, Lincoln County proposed budget, on June 6th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM at Lincoln Central Academy's auditorium. All members were present with the exception of Commissioner Bradford. Several citizens recognized and voiced their concerns on the '23 budget, draft budget, more specifically, the property tax increase and salary increases. After the closure of the public hearing, the Budget Committee of the County of Lincoln, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the auditorium of Lincoln Central Academy on June 6th, 2023, at 9:05 PM. Item one, Mike Goody, interim superintendent of Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities, presented their '23-'24 proposed budget, which is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hambrik, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached '23-'24 proposed budget for the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities.
Do I have a motion approving their budget? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Taylor seconds that. Any questions or comments on their budget? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item two, Sandy Metcalfe, CFO of the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department. She presented information on some Durango bids, and the explanation is attached. There's no action required to this. Item three, Commissioner Caldwell presented the request of the Fire and EMA Director, Doug Campbell, which is attached. And we had a motion by Commissioner Caldwell, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of rolling the unused money over in line 54310-335 due to delays in surveys, getting property through the court system, and ISO coverage questions. The rolled money, and unused money, over in line 54310-451 due to the delay in purchasing gear.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item four, Finance Director Trentum presented the following items. A, State Highway Litter Grant Contract attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the State Highway Litter Grant Contract.
Okay, that's in your packet. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Nix makes a second. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments attached. And a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 101 General Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the Commission on this? Mr. Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Sanders seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment. It's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hambrik, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment.
Okay, what's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Frasrand makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendment attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ashley makes a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
E, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. They're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Rolls Walter makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Coley seconds that. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
F, 143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments. And they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Coley makes a motion for approval to have a second. Commissioner Nick seconds. Any questions, comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
G, 146 Extended School Program Fund Budget Amendments. And they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Caldwell, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 146 Extended School Program Fund Budget Amendments.
Okay, what's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval to have Commissioner Ewing seconds. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
H, 177 Educational Capital Projects Program Fund Budget Amendments. And they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 177 Education Capital Projects Program Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Coley makes a motion for approval to have a second. Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Aye. Financials, and they're enclosed. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the enclosed financials.
Would recommend a motion for approval of the acceptance of the financials. It's in your packet. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions on those? All in favor of acknowledgment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item five, Chairman Cunningham. Item five eight, Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Final Budget Approval. It's enclosed. Item one, Appropriation Resolution. It's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed five yes, two no, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution making appropriations for various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Lincoln County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
Okay. We will have a roll call after we have a motion to this. There's three parts to passing a budget for the county. One is the appropriations, which is the first part. That's if, if you're agreeing with that, that's appropriating that amount of money to those different areas in our budget. Then we have a tax levy resolution, and that relates to the tax rate on it. And then the third part is the nonprofits that we're saying we're appropriating money. At least the first two go pretty much hand in hand. You really can't pass one without passing the other one because you have to have the funds there if you appropriate those monies. Any questions before I ask for a motion? We will be having a roll call vote on this, and we will start with what district and...
I don't have them separated by district.
Okay, it's just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just the way she has them on her roll call. And on the second vote, if we have a second vote on anything, we'll start at the other end, on the opposite end, okay? Any questions on procedure?
The big question is on the second part. Are all the questions now or where they are?
Okay, our first motion that I will ask for will be the appropriation resolution. That's the part that appropriating the different amounts of money for the different areas in the budget. That's the appropriation. Then I will ask for a motion on the tax levy. That's the 3.020, or .2020.
The question is there at that time?
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay. Any questions?
If you pass the first one and the second fails...
Then you don't have any money to fund it. So then it would still go back to budget.
And redo it.
Yeah. Yeah, just because you voted those amount of monies and you don't fund it, we still are nowhere. And we have until, without doing something, we have to the end of July to get a budget passed. If it goes beyond the end of July, then before the 15th of August, we need to request an extension from the Comptroller's Office. And then we have to have a budget passed by the end of September, otherwise you're out of business. Now, if a budget's not passed by the 1st of July, we continue on this year's budget. So there would, we would still be operating on the same amount of funds to all those areas on this year's budget via budget continuation. Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion related to the appropriation resolution that was passed by the Budget Committee. Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Spray. Okay, the floor is now open for discussion. Seeing none, are you ready for a roll call vote then? Madam Clerk, if you...
I've actually got, I thought there might be a little more discussion than that, but nobody added anything.
Well...
And we look at cuts everywhere we can cut. That's the point.
Well, yeah, I mean, okay. Commissioner Cunningham raised his hand first. Do you want to address questions or do you want to address a narrative?
I was going to let some other people speak first, but if nobody was going to speak, I was going to say it like I said.
Okay, let me, let me see the hands of those who want to speak on the appropriation resolution. Commissioner Cunningham has raised his hand. Commissioner Rolls has raised her hand.
Well, I'm a...
Commissioner Bryant, may. Commissioner Frazran?
I'm on the side of the room.
Okay. Is that all? Doesn't mean you can't later, but that's, we, okay. I recognize Commissioner Cunningham, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate everyone being here tonight and also everyone that is watching it at home on TV. You know, the duties of a county commissioner can be very difficult. I really feel for the newer commissioners among us. It's really tough to have to learn so much in a short period of time. And if you put in a lot of hours over a four-year period, you can get a pretty good grip on everything that happens in county government. But bust y'all's heart, y'all just haven't had time to get that far yet. But I see a lot of you putting in a lot of extra hours, really proud of the work that you're putting in. This is a heck of a year to experience one's first commission budget. Guess what's hard to prepare for all this sometimes is all the bad information that gets passed around out there. You know, it seems like you spend all your time correcting misinformation and there's no way to stop it once it gets out there. The threats you receive, anonymous people who, you know, call you a liar and people that you know that call you a liar. It's also hard on your family, you know, your kids or your spouse or your mom or whoever, you know, they want to get in there on social media and try to defend you. And I try to, I tell my crew to stay away from all that. I got one daughter that doesn't always listen, but hey, she's on her own, pays her own bills. I can't tell her what to do anymore. But she said, you know, Dad, they called you a liar, you know, they said, you know, go to the 49-minute mark or whatever, and this is where he lied, you know? And, you know, you just can't go out and correct all that stuff. But there'd been a commissioner that told everyone that based on the proposed new tax rate, that we would pay the second highest taxes in the state. Well, funny thing about those tax rates is that next year, our tax rate will drop tremendously. And you know what? You won't pay a cent less in taxes because of it. You know, how could that possibly be? Because next year, when we have our reappraisal year, the values of our property are going to go up probably the largest amount in the county's history. What happens then is that the state comes in, they will adjust the tax rate back down so that the same money essentially will be collected from Lincoln County property taxpayers. You know, individual taxpayers might pay a little more or a little less, but you're basically going to be paying the same amount even though the rate itself has dropped, you know, 60 points or whatever, and that's a guess, by the way. But that's why you can't compare tax rates from one county to another because they're all reappraised in different years and they're all set up on different schedules. Some of them do it five years, some of them do it six, you know, it's just different for everybody. Also, a $250,000 house in Lincoln County is a pretty nice house. I'm not sure you can get a small condo in parts of Davidson and Shelby or Rutherford Counties, for instance. A lot of factors go into determining what your property tax rate is, and that rate is only a part of it. There's something called the effective rate, which actually analyzes what people really pay. The actual physical dollars that they pay is a much more accurate way of looking at that. And a $250,000 house in Lot in Lincoln County would pay about 1325 per year. In Davidson County, that same $250,000 appraisal would pay about $2,200 a year. In Shelby County, it's $3,400 a year. Uh, let's see. A $250,000 house in Lot in Lincoln County pays about 1325 per year, property taxes. In Davidson County, they would pay about $2,200. In Shelby County, 3425 for that same $250,000 appraisal. Of course, we're not, certainly not talking about the same size house here. You know, we're not anywhere close to those guys and what they pay in actual taxes. I had the opportunity to meet a lot of newcomers that come to our community before they even move here. And I talked to them about, you know, the things that attracted them here and asked them, you know, what brought them down here and what they think about the property taxes. I always ask that. And I had a guy in the office last month, and he was from Illinois, and he literally busted out laughing at how low our property taxes are here. He paid more than double for actually a lesser house up there in Illinois. So, you know, we just need to make sure that we're getting our information from the right people. If people know that the tax rate is only a small, small part of the equation and just purposely lied about it, I guess I would call that disinformation. But if this person really didn't know what they were talking about and failed to research any of it, then I guess that's misinformation. You know, I would hope it's the latter, that they just didn't know any better. So the facts are that as citizens of the state of Tennessee, we pay some of the lowest property taxes in the United States, about half the national average. And as a county within this state, we're somewhere in the middle of the 95 counties in Tennessee, regardless of what our rate does this year. Counties all over the state, you know, facing a lot of the same problems that we are. Another one of my favorites was the comparison that our director of schools makes more than the governor. Every expense was listed out for Dr. Heath down to the Social Security and the Medicare matches, yet they neglected to include that the governor lives in a mansion for free with all expenses paid. Large budget for redecorating the mansion, one heck of a travel expense. So there's some tremendous differences in the benefits that the governor gets as compared to what our school superintendent gets. But it was kind of snappy. So people remembered that, and I've had a lot of people talk about that information when they were talking to me. Then there was an elected official who stated that our problems were all just a mismanagement issue and used as an example the solar farm at Elora. This solar farm began as a TVA project. They needed more renewable energy sources. They put out bids to private companies to construct, own, and operate large solar farm. TVA would supply lots of funding, grants, et cetera. A private company had talked to and was ready to make a deal with some local landowners. It was at this point that we were notified of the possibility of the project being in play here in Lincoln County. And to have a chance to get and to win the bid for TVA's financial assistance, the governmental body had to provide a pilot or a tax break. The private company and TVA made that crystal clear to everyone. Different states have different ways of providing tax rates. And in Lincoln County in Tennessee, all we've got is a pilot program. In Alabama, for instance, they just, they will throw actual cash money on the table and say, hey, here's, you know, $5 million, and here's the land free, and here's the tax breaks. And they throw a lot of stuff out there. It's not just Alabama. I use them as an example because we compete against them so often, it seems like. But that's the only, that's the only way that we've got to compete with some of these other states in trying to win some of these projects. So to have a chance to get and win the bid for TVA's financial assistance, the governmental body had to provide a pilot or a tax break. The private company and TVA made that clear to us. This property was bringing in around 13,000 just as farmland, and it was greenbelt farmland at that. So once the solar farm was in place, that would rise to 113,000 per year. Then in five years, it would go up some and continue to increase over that first 20 years. And we didn't have to provide anything. I mean, nothing. We didn't have to put in a water line to a bathroom or a roll of toilet paper. We had to do absolutely nothing. And then after 20 years, they pay the full amount. So this, this solar farm, it provides enough power to supply 15,000 homes. And it is, as I understand, giving TVA additional options for their energy use. This helps the entire TVA region, which includes seven states. It's also a great recruiting tool for industry. A lot of companies are concerned, as they should be, about our future energy sources, and potential companies want to know, do you have renewable energy sources in the area? And we can say, yes, by golly, we've got one right here. Stuart McCurdy, who's the Vice President of Next Air Energy, said this is one of the largest solar farms in the state and in the valley as well. And when he says the valley, he's talking about the Tennessee Valley Authority region. This also furthered our relationship with TVA. We have received back-to-back grants to improve building sites here in Lincoln County, and this work has made two of our sites even more attractive than what they were. The Valley Times reported that the construction of the solar farm lasted 17 months and generated a significant, and I quote exactly, "generated a significant local economic boost to Lincoln County and the state by creating approximately 250 construction jobs and stimulating the purchase of regional goods and services from local vendors." Additionally, they reported that the facility does not require any water to generate electricity and doesn't create any air or water pollution. It's 100% renewable energy. And there was also a comment made about the lack of jobs in this particular project. And this particular project was all about infrastructure. You know, it was, in this case, power sources, energy. TVA, the IDB, and the state, we work on many projects that involve nothing but infrastructure. The before-mentioned site development projects in the last couple of years, as well as past road, sewer, water projects. You've got to have the necessary infrastructure before you can start bringing in the jobs. We're working on the road project at the Horizon Park, you know, as we speak now. But yet this person indicated there was no benefit for Lincoln County out of this project. You know, let's get away from all this misinformation and let's get, talk real facts. We have a deficit on the general fund side of our budget. Has nothing to do with school operations. We can't take money from school operations and plug it into the Sessions Office or the Sheriff's Department or whatever. We've talked about the different revenue sources that we can use. The sales tax just doesn't bring in enough revenue. 250,000 per year or so would be our share. An increased sales tax also puts us at a real disadvantage in trying to compete against a larger metropolitan area in Huntsville with a much cheaper sales tax. a larger metropolitan area in Huntsville with a much cheaper sales tax, you know, right there across our state line. It hurts the poor, costs them a lot more than they realize over a year's time. A gentleman spoke at the public hearing and indicated that, hey, he drove across the state line and saved $30 getting his groceries every single time that he went. You know, we are losing people left and right, and we don't need to make it worse by raising the sales tax. Those people going across the state line kind of started when the city pulled our, a lot of our sales tax revenue there a few years ago. So, I'd say at Walmart, right across the line, you know, really hurts us. This sales tax must also be voted on by the people in a mandatory referendum, and a similar attempt failed a few years ago. A reasonable wheel tax would also fall short of funding our problem. If it costs $225 to register each one of your vehicles, that would bring in the equivalent of 55 cents on the property tax rate. That would solve our general fund problems, but it doesn't provide a nickel for the school building portion of this problem. The wheel tax also has some other problems that I talked about at the last budget meeting. It can also be taken to a referendum, and only requires 910 signatures to do so. I can't imagine that the people wouldn't do that. That would delay us until next year, and we just can't wait that long. And that leaves us with the property tax. I'm telling you all tonight, and I had expressed this at the last budget meeting, if we cannot pass a significant increase tonight, we're gonna have to make serious cuts to our general fund side of the budget. This is the courthouse, this is the jail, the election commission, fire EMA, all that kind of stuff. As outlined at the last budget meeting, and we had several different ways of looking at it, we looked at it from the standpoint, if you got rid of the last person that was hired, how much that would be. And then we also looked at it from a corporate way of looking at it and picked the person who made the most money and took them out. But regardless of how we do it, you know, that's gonna be at least one employee for most of the 13 areas in that budget. That's all the courts, the register of deeds, assessor, trustee, mayor's office, sheriff's office, everybody. On the bright side, we have an opportunity to make tremendous strides with our schools. I think people have had it pretty good here over the years. The last two school building programs have not included any kind of tax increase. We've built multiple schools within the confines of our budgeted funds, and we've been able to do that because we've done them every 10 or 15 years. We've been able to space it out some, so we had time to, you know, pay one project off, and then we could start another one. This time, when we finished the Blanch project, the school board was immediately back with the Highland Rim project. You know, and I can't help but think about a previous building program that we had, probably about 2000, a little after that, I guess, where for 20 cents on the tax rate, we could have built another brand-new school. And you could build one for $6 million then. Well, it's $50 million now. You know, I consider that mismanagement, because we were not willing to raise the revenue then, and we could have saved ourselves a lot of money just by looking into the future just a little bit. You know, and I'm afraid we could make a similar mistake tonight. We had the opportunity to fix our schools for a decade. It's not going to be any cheaper to try to build a school two years from now. This problem is not going away. We actually have the opportunity to build this school and have some money left over that could go into a capital school building fund to save money for the next building program. That just depends on how the bids come in. Lincoln County High School will be operating 44 years this fall. You know, it's just amazing that it's been that long. But, you know, it needs work, and I know the school board had a bunch of money in there this time for work there. So, time flies, 44 years since that high school was built. Our salary problems are not going to correct themselves for a variety of reasons. There's a real worker shortage out there, and we are not competing with what we're paying now. If we pass this increase, we can get those salaries up to above $15 for our courts, house people, et cetera, those areas of the general fund. I had made a comparison at the last budget meeting regarding the fact that people could go to any fast-food restaurant and make more money than that, but people said this was an unfair comparison because we provide insurance. Folks, we're asking people to do payroll, you know, mapping, et cetera, for that kind of money. This is certainly a different kind of job than entry-level fast-food service. We are seriously behind in our salaries. We have multiple openings in county offices now because we can't hire people for what we're paying them. And this is what elected officials and department heads have been telling us three, four years. I see Sandy Metcalf nodding her head. I've heard her say that over and over. Counties all over the country are grappling with this same problem, and there's no magic dust that we can sprinkle over this. You know what works for some counties, doesn't necessarily work for us, but, you know, I think you've got to ask yourself, what are your county services worth per year? You know, let's just say that you pay $1,500 a year, and that's a lot more than what the average person pays, but for your tax payment of $1,500, you get an education for your kids, for your grandkids, for your neighbor's kids, whoever. Today's kids are our future doctors and nurses and engineers and industrial maintenance specialists and law enforcement officers. You know, they're the ones that's gonna be running this show here in a few years, and we want them to get as much education as they can. You know, if one applies themselves, you can get an outstanding education in Lincoln County, Tennessee. If you live out in the county and you don't live within the city limits, you have a road that gets you home. The road in front of my house is worth $1,500 a year. We have 850 miles of roads to maintain here in Lincoln County, lets people visit, conduct business all over the county. You know, I feel like our road superintendent's got done a great job. He's went to four 10-hour days and saved a lot of money, maintained our roads with fewer employees than previous superintendents. We operate a rock quarry, which few counties have available, and this saves us a lot of money. We have an election department who oversees our elections to make sure that they're fair and that everybody follows the rules. We have one of the finest sheriff's departments in this state. They keep order here in Lincoln County. Perhaps you have an unruly neighbor or a family member causing problems or a string of robberies in your area. You never know when you're gonna need those kind of services. But if you need them, you're provided with top-notch law enforcement. The sheriff's department, the jail, is a big operation, and it has to be open 24/7. We have a court system that can take care of not only criminal cases, we're talking about civil stuff such as adoptions, divorces, order protections, divorce modification, contested wills, suits to collect debt. There's all kind of problems that are handled every single day, in our most days, in our court system. Very fortunate to have Becky Bartlett Carpenter now, she's gotten married, and Lisa Simmons is our respective court clerks. Becky, of course, is the clerk and master and has many of the powers of the chancellor, like signing probate, et cetera. These are critical offices that certainly can't stand any kind of budget layoffs. You've got a county court clerk who by law handles the registering of all motorized vehicles for use on public road, also handle all the business license, marriage license, hunting and fishing license, all the things that are required by state and federal law, also takes the minutes of the county legislative body. You know, applications for beer permits, she collects all the beer taxes, hotel motel taxes. They have a very busy office that most everybody uses. The county mayor's office serves as the chief financial office of the county, has care and custody of all county property. He executes the will of the county legislative body. Got the trustee's office. Mary Jane Porter collects the county's property taxes, accounts for and disperses all those county funds. She's also in charge of investing the idle funds that are out there. She is the county's bank, and it's a constitutional office. And what a leader and a team player she is, fortunate to have her. She jumped in on this. We had talked earlier in the budget about the tax relief. She did a lot of extra work to get that information together and said that, you know, she'd, her and her office would get all this taken care of. Register of deeds, responsible for recording deeds and maintaining the records of the county. Very fortunate to have all our records, going back to 1810. Randy DeLapp has been a wonderful steward of our records. Got a veterans' service office that provides assistance to veterans on military issues, arranges medical assistance and funerals for veterans. This office serves around 3,000 veterans and their dependents. A lot of good things, you know, done in that office. Juvenile services, which handles civil and delinquency cases involving children under 18. This office is responsible for seeing that juveniles get a fair hearing and due process. We have so many other services, you know, I could go on for a long time. The property assessor, finance department, most of which are required by law. Emergency management, a service that's been understaffed for so long, and I think Doug Campbell's done a wonderful job. But the weather patterns, et cetera, that we're having, gonna be critical for us, this office in the future. We also can't respond to all the calls that we have now. We desperately needed to add personnel to that department this year. Also, we have several other offices, planning and zoning, the property assessor, and more, who requested personnel, who desperately needed that personnel and didn't get it. You know, we funded only $300,000 out of the $2 million, more than $2 million, in request. And people say that we should cut more, you know, before raising taxes. I mean, sure, you could go in there and cut a travel that's not gonna amount to much in some of these things, but commissioners would just pay it out of their pocket, I guess. Wouldn't, I would be in favor of doing stuff like that, but a lot of it, you know, just doesn't accomplish anything. You know, it gets back to the point, how can we possibly cut all these services? You know, it's in y'all's hands, in y'all's hands. Are we gonna take a step forward here in Lincoln County, or are we gonna take a step back? And, you know, I'm asking y'all to make a really tough decision tonight and vote for this budget. I think you've got to ask yourself, are these services not worth $1,500 a year, especially when the average bear really pays a lot less than that? I think these services are worth that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rose Walter, you were next, if you'd like to speak still.
I certainly don't have a speech prepared at all. I do agree with what Mr. Cunningham said. As a teacher, I'm ashamed at the state that Highland Rim is in. I'm a graduate of 1998, and if you know, you know. That was the year that a classmate was killed, and I am disgusted that we would allow a school to sit with the growth that's coming in from the state line and have our children literally a sitting ducks, not planning ahead to make sure that they and the teachers are taken care of. I'm disgusted at what the classrooms look like that some of these children are in. It is unhealthy situation, and I'm ashamed, as a commissioner, that I cannot share pictures and documentation of what those facilities look like out with others in fear that some crazy person may target that school and go and do something to hurt the children and the teachers there. There's no doubt that we do need a school in that area. I'm ashamed that when teachers stood up to speak at the last meeting, the public forum, that some were booed. As a teacher, we do a lot more than teach. These teachers, when parents need clothes or shampoo or even paying bills, these teachers step in and a lot of times pay out of pocket and do what they need to do to make sure that these children and families are supported. So, we definitely need a school, and we need to look ahead. As a new commissioner, that's one thing I've been saddened about, is the lack of planning. You know, a lot of the calls that I've got from people, they want to know why? How did we get here? And most of us are new this time. We can't answer those questions. I've tried so hard to go back and look and pull the numbers and research, and I agree with some of my constituents. I don't, I don't agree with all of the decisions that were made, but I look at these numbers and deficit in 23, 24, it's 23.33. The year before, 19.97, 7.65. As a new person, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for my community that we're in this situation. I've heard the stories of business owners and widows and people that are struggling and calling, and my heart breaks for you, and I am so sorry that past leadership made some decisions that contributed to this. Inflation contributed to this, COVID contributed to this. My heart aches for you. But I'm gonna tell you, I'm not, apology I'm not gonna make is down the road when we didn't take action to do an increase now because a horrible situation is going to be a devastating situation moving forward. So, I support the need for schools, I support the need for paying people what they need. You get what you pay for. We're losing teachers and people to all different areas because you can make more. We're losing people that get trained in law enforcement, paying all this money for them to get trained, and then a more lucrative position comes up and they leave, and we're losing money and we're losing people that we've vested time and energy into. But there's something else that really resonated with me when listening to the people speak. There's one thing that is lacking. You know, I do support, we've got to have a tax increase, but since that night, one word has really resonated with me, and that's compromise. I don't care if it's just a little bit, there's got to be some give and take. If you want my travel time, take it. I bet other people up here would be able to volunteer. I bet that our departments at the courthouse would be able to give something up, but our community is asking for a little bit of compromise. There's got to be give and take. This is, as Lincoln County says, one LC. We've got to work together and try and have one another's back, and Lincoln County is Lincoln County strong. And we may not be able to get that down a whole lot, but I do think there should be some compromise, but I just want my community to know, we have to have a tax increase. I'm so empathetic, I'm so empathetic. But again, I will not, in three years, and I've had calls, we'll go door-to-door, and we're not going to reelect you and all that. I didn't get in here for a popularity contest, and I sure didn't get in here for the money I'm making each month, I can tell you that, and these other people. But I will not have to make an apology down the road that we didn't take some sort of action now. But I would request for the commission to consider sending this back, and we do need to make some cuts to show compromise and that we have listened to the community, even if it's a little bit, just to see that there is give and take, and we are in this together. Thank you.
Commissioner Fran was next. Do you want to speak? Commissioner Fran, pardon?
I'll wait to the next.
To the next meeting or after the next speaker?
Six, seven.
Okay, all righty. Commissioner Bryant, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I'll be short and sweet. I don't, I hate to follow Doug, I really, really do. He has all this information. And I looked at my desk the other day, and I had the same pile. I've got this big pile of information on my desk, and I can talk about a ton of things about, you know, that's already been said here tonight, about our, you know, taxes and how they relate to other people, and basically the rate's simply a multiplier, and I could talk about a lot of the things he did, he talked about already, and that Jeanie talked about tonight. But I decided I'd just be a little bit simpler than that, and I decided, well, how am I gonna do that? How am I gonna just be really, really simple and try to get my point across? So, I called the other day, I called Sandy out to the jail. She keeps up with your budget, does a good job out there, and as you all know, we cannot get a food contract. I don't know if you all know that, but we can simply not get a food contract. Nobody will give us a food contract for the jail. We simply have to pay whatever they want. We're at their mercy right now. They just won't do it. So, we're paying cost-plus on the food out at the jail. So, I got to thinking about that a little bit a couple of weeks ago, and I'm a pretty simple thinker, as you all know. So, I went to a local grocer, and, you know, we haven't had a tax increase in five years. So, I went to a local grocer, and I just picked up an item at that grocery store, just a standard item. I brought the, I brought the cover with me here, a can of green beans. And I paid $1.59 for those green beans. So, then I asked this grocer, I said, would you please do something for me? And he said, of course I will. And I said, would you look up what this cost five years ago? And he said, sure will. And it took several days, because I assume those records are way back somewhere, and I figured mine, they're in some box somewhere, and I had to go get it. Well, I went in about four days later, and they told me it was 79 cents. Same can, 79 cents. Now, that's 100% increase. Now, that's 100% increase. Now, you all know what I do, I buy stuff constantly. I bought a motor last year for a chiller, and it was 800, and I'm going to say $47. I bought that same motor the other day, this is one year, it was $1,297. $400 in one year. Now, that's not anybody's fault. It's not your fault, it's not you folks, it's not your fault, it's not your fault that this stuff's went up, it's not, surely not any of you, your fault, but we can, we can help it, that the economy is the way it is. But the fact of the matter is, is the economy is the way it is. And the other fact is, that Lincoln County is not immune to that. They're not immune to the price that you pay for goods and services. We have a jail out there, and I promise you, their food, probably a couple of years ago, was X price. I guarantee you, it's went up 100%. I didn't check that number, but it has for you, and it has for me. Everything I buy has went up at least 50% in the last five years, whether it be gasoline, there's nothing you can think of that hadn't went up 50%. Nothing, I promise you. And the tax increase, proposed tax increase is a little better than 50 cents. I would say to you, and you all, that the county is not immune to that. As a matter of fact, there's several things we have to do. If it's up to me, we would have a garden out to the jail. Wouldn't buy anything, that's not up to me. State says you will do this, and you will do this, and you will do this. And we have to do it, it's just that simple. Wouldn't be any TV out there, we got to have a little TV, I don't think they got about two channels, do they, Sheriff? But we got to have a little TV for them, you know, I, I don't agree with that, but that's not what state law says. It's not your fault, it's not your fault, it's just the times. I would like to thank a couple of people, and, and I want to talk about our employees for a second. Couple of people I would love to thank, Ms. Young, Mr. Young, Mr. Bradford. They sat on Personnel Committee with me, and we had a meeting, a, a, a rough meeting. And if you don't believe Personnel is a rough committee to be on, just sign up. I promise you, it's tough. That's all of you know, we had a salary study, and it was rough, and you know, it, it said a lot of things, none of the people in the courthouse liked it, it had some terrible numbers, and what it basically said is, the person that Commissioner Cunningham was talking about a while ago that made $12 an hour, should be making $20 an hour. That's what it said, basically. So, that's a pretty good increase, you know, and I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can stand that, I don't know if you good folks can stand that, probably, you know, it's tough. So, the Personnel Committee came up with this new scale. I mean, all the hard work we did, and I sure do appreciate y'all, I really do, because it's a tough committee, I mean, you get beat up for months, we've been getting beat up for six months, and, and I, I appreciate that. We came up with a scale that's a middle of the road. That person that's making $12, will be making, depending on where they're at and how much they, how long they've been here, they'll be making, what, 14, 15, something like that, maybe 16, depending on where they're at. And it's loaded toward the bottom, so that the folks who really need the money and have been here a long time are going to benefit from that. But I'm going to tell you, you know, we can talk about the value of this, the value of that, the only thing, the best, the most valuable thing you have, whether it's you folks, us, it's your employees. I don't care what business you're in, I dare anybody, because I've done it, I was on vacation, and on Facebook, I was on county time, sorry, but I was on vacation. But I came up here the other day and talked to some folks, and, and, well, everybody that was here, and was trying to, you know, further this, this value of employees thing, and I didn't find anybody that wasn't working. I've yet to find anybody not working up here at the courthouse. I haven't yet to find anybody not working at the jail. I mean, we can't even keep a corrections officer, we're having to pay people overtime, we can't hire them because we don't pay enough. We simply don't pay enough. In some cases, the county and some of the county schools in general, and some of the things I do, you know, we're, we're losing employees right now that we're paying a lot of money, we really are, in, in what folks would think's a lot of money, but they go to Alabama and get 10 more dollars an hour, these are skilled labor I'm talking about. Now, we can't continue to lose skilled labor, and, and people want to talk about the schools a little bit, and I, I want to correct a few things there, because I don't normally talk about schools, because everybody knows where I work, but we, we have, people talk about Highland Rim a lot, we've got some delayed maintenance out there. So, let's get that out there, let's talk about that just a second, because that's what I do, and I'm not mad, you can say anything you want to, you can think anything you want to, everybody's grown. But when you're thinking about building a new building, which we were, at one point we were thinking about building a building that would hold everybody, what you do for about three years is you delay things. You don't, you don't put in those LED lights at all, the rest of the schools have, that I haven't heard a soul talk about, by the way, that saves the county 300,000 real dollars every year. I mean, we don't write the check, we say $300,000, we did that in-house, by the way, my, my guys and girls did, credit to them, most people had that done outside. But we've got some things out there, but guess what? When we decided we were only going to be able to build a building, or possibly build a building for half that many folks, we started doing those things. My crew put in 100 light fixtures last week out there, and we got a bunch more to put in. We ordered some sinks right there that we've been putting off, because you don't want to put a sink in a building, you're going to close. You don't want to put LED lights in a building, you're going to close. Now, we got, we had some Facebook thing, and I hate to bring up Facebook, but I'm going, I'm a little defensive here, so, we had somebody that said we got a leak in a brand-new school down there at Blanche, a leak down there, there is, it's about the size of a dime. And when it rains a certain way, one in 20 times, it'll leak. We've been up there with 14 hose pipes, we've done everything you can possibly do to find that leak, and even had the contractor actually come back, because it's under warranty. We've got about 800,000 square feet of roof in schools. We've got about 200,000 in auxiliary buildings, that's a million square feet. The leaks we have would fit right here where the clerk's sitting, about five square feet out of a million. So, don't be beating my folks up, because I'm, I'm telling you, five square feet is a really good record out of a million square feet. Let me get off of that, I need to get on something else. Our employees, we got to keep them, it's the thing, we got to have these employees. Without this, without this increase, we're not going to happen, they're going to leave. And I don't know where we're going to get any more, because we can't afford to pay them. And the last thing, and I'm going to leave you with this, and I've been here long enough, being a commissioner is not easy. There's nothing easy about it. There's a young commissioner here that I talk to from time to time, and they told me one time the other day, they were like, oh my goodness, I didn't know. And it is hard, and I know you folks are passionate about what you think out there, and I, you, you think anything you want to, you're, you're a grown person, you can think anything you want to. We listened to four hours, three hours the other night of public hearing, and that's where we normally say things like that, that's where it should be said, in a public hearing. Tonight, we had a public hearing the other night. But we listen to all of you, I listen to everyone, there was 23 people spoken in opposition to. But being a commissioner is hard work, and it's hard decisions, there's some super hard decisions. And I would say that there's about 200 people here tonight, I'm going to say that probably, you know, part of that bunch is the school system over here, part of them are here, part of them are government employees, whatever, there's about 35,000 folks that are home. And they understand, they don't like it, but they understand that your job is very, very hard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Tackett.
I'm Commissioner Marion Tackett, District 4, Park City area. I'm a new commissioner, so I hadn't said a lot. I'm like the little boy with the cornbread, he didn't speak every time he went to the dinner table, and so one night he said something, and Mama said, well, my goodness, you said something, and he said, everything's been all right till now. So, I kind of feel that way about this, everything has been all right till now, and I don't know a whole lot about anything, I just know one thing, that nobody has said one word up here tonight about the folks who are on limited incomes, those older folks that live out there, no talent, they have blown my cell phone, my computer up, saying, we cannot pay these taxes, we will have to sell our house. We live on a fixed income, and we can't make this happen. And I'm a real estate agent, and a lot of people have called me and said, you'll have to sell our house, we can't live here. And I could tell you, people have called me and cried on the phone, his wife had, has dementia, has Alzheimer's, they're on a fixed income, they can't live there anymore. But I said to them, well, where are you going to go? Because we're limited there in places for people to go. But you have to think about all of this, and I agree with everything that everybody's said in this room tonight, and this is a fine group of commissioners, and I know that everybody has worked hard on this to try to put this together. And I agree with Commissioner Ginny there, I think we should back up and pump a little bit and try to do better. I know y'all worked hard on this, and we all work hard at our job, but the thing about it is, we're not always right, and we need, we can do better than this. And so, I just think we need to try to, and you know, you got to listen to your community too, I'm the 4th district, well, I'll tell you. When people call you, they call me tonight, as I was on my way here, so when people call me and they say, we voted for you to be a commissioner, now we're asking you to vote for us, and so, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to vote for them, and I'm going to work real hard to make something work for those people, and I hope that we can all work together as a commission and make it work for our community. And I know we need everything, I understand that, but I also had a commissioner who's retired tell me, we didn't do our job down through the years, and now y'all are stuck with it. So, he's got that right.
Anyone else? Okay, we got a motion on the floor, and it's been properly second. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, this is a motion for the appropriation resolution. A yes vote would be approving the appropriation revol- uh, uh, resolution, a no vote is to not approve it. So, as she calls your name, it's a yes or no?
Commissioner Rose Walter. Commissioner Hambrick. Frazrand. Guntherberg. Douglas. Bryant. Young. Haynes. Cunningham. Taylor. Nix. Eldridge. Spray. Tackett. Bradford. Mitchell. Ewen. Ashley. Rogers. Caldwell. Brown. Walker. Sanders. Six, yes, 18, no.
Okay. Motion fails. Next item is our tax levy resolution. The next two items are just, we got to do these to go through this, you know, it would be appropriate, the way that the commission feels, to turn these down, but I would entertain a motion for the tax rev- uh, tax levy resolution, that would be setting the tax rate at the $3.20.
Mr. Chairman, without the appropriations resolution, it's wasted over.
Well, I wanted official, though, so, I would entertain a motion for it not to be that, if that's the will of the commission. Okay, we have, Commissioner Ashley, that we have approval to, to not set the tax rate at this time at the 3.20. Do I have a second? Commissioner Eldridge, seconds, any discussion? Wait, that's a totally different thing, so it wouldn't come under this. No, sir, no, sir. Anybody else? Okay, a yes vote on this is to turn down this tax rate. We'll still go ahead and have a roll call. So, a yes vote is not voting for this tax rate. Understand? Yes is a no for the 3.20 tax rate. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cooley. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Walker. Brown. Caldwell. Rogers. Ashley. Ewen. Mitchell. Bradford. Tackett. Spray. Eldridge. Nix. Taylor. Cunningham. Haynes. Young. Bryant. Douglas. Guntherberg. Frazrand. Hambrick. Rose Walter.
24, yes. Unanimously turned down. The next item is the nonprofit appropriation. If you do not want to approve that, I would entertain a motion for not approving the nonprofit appropriation resolution. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Ewen, seconds, any discussion on this item? We'll do a roll call again. A yes vote is to turn down approval of the nonprofit appropriations. Yes vote is to turn it down as it was printed. Madam Clerk?
Rose Walter. Hambrick. Frazrand. Douglas. Bryant. Young. Haynes. Cunningham. Taylor. Nix. Eldridge. Spray. Tackett. Bradford. Mitchell. Ewen. Ashley. Rogers. Caldwell. Brown. Walker. Sanders. Cooley. 24, yes.
Motion turned down is unanimously approved. Ready for the next item?
Item B, State Litter Grant, 2023, 24. It's attached, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, the passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the state litter grant.
What's, what's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Hambrick, second, said, any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, Budget Meeting Date Change. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of changing the Budget Committee meeting to July the 10th, 2023.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this? Commissioner Ewen makes a motion for that change, do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg, seconds, any discussion? All in favor of changing that from the July 4th, uh, regular scheduled date to July the 10th, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, Budget Agenda. Posting of agendas 48 hours prior to meetings, that's an information item. Item E, Bearden Mill Road, you want me to do this one now, or you just want to wait till later?
Uh, no, I guess we, we can go ahead, uh, any of the items that came up on the, on the reconvened, uh, meeting would be in order.
All right, so I'll just go ahead and read this one the way it's painted in. Item B, Bearden Mill Road, Highway Superintendent Tim Gill and County Attorney Ed Sims discussed a state contract with the committee stating the original contract was signed in, uh, 2018. The federal government is contributing 80%, the state 20%, and the county 0%. This contract is a standard form, and the form states that if the federal money runs out, we could have to pay the balance. Superintendent Gill states that the state would pay for finishing Bearden Mill Road, uh, bridge project. County Attorney Sims would like some clarification from the state on this contract. We, upon consideration, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, passed seven yes, one absent, to recess this meeting and reconvene on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the basement courtroom. And... And from that meeting, we have the reconvened Budget Committee, which met tonight at 5:00 PM in the basement of the courtroom. All members were present. Item one was the Highway Superintendent Tim Gill and the Bearden Mill Project Contract, which is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and unanimously passed to accept the Bearden Mill Project Contract authorizing the appropriate signatures.
Okay. Does everybody understand this? On this, you know, Budget Committee voted unanimously to go ahead and for Superintendent Tim Gill to sign this contract with the state. Everybody understand? I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Taylor makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewan, seconds. Any questions on this? I want to make sure you understand all this. Yes. The only way we would have to pay something if we added something to be done to it that was not in this original contract. That's right. That's right. Anybody else? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item two, tax relief information, which is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor and seconded by Commissioner Ewan unanimously passed that $185 be appropriated for the relief of those who qualify and receive this annually, basically.
Okay. Okay. This one's a little more complicated on this. Here's, did all the commissioners get a copy of this? This was brought up at the meeting we had in Gatlinburg is where this came out of. And basically, the state gives, is it $115? $135 to a senior or a disabled veteran that qualified for a tax relief on their property. They have to jump through a hoop as far as how much value would be on their property, how much money they make, do they have savings? So they have to qualify. Mary Jane Porter's office does all that qualifying, so it's not just a matter of walking in, but the savings to them would be a total of...
The total cost and savings if this passes would be $320.
Of which the county would absorb $185, $185 of their tax bill. The rest of it, we would get reimbursed from the state, the other portion of that. Everybody understand that? I think I'm right on this. There's about 900 people now that have already... 540. I thought it was higher than that. Okay. 540 people that have qualified for that. And you qualify annually. It's not something, once you qualify, you don't automatically qualify the next year. Total expense to the county, if you vote to pass this, is somewhere around $100,000? Correct? Okay. So what this is, is helping those people that are senior citizens that, as far as their property tax bill. Any questions? The total's about 300. If their tax bill was over that, anything above the 3.25, they have to pay still, but it would be reduced by $325. Everybody understand? We're not promoting it or anything. It's just one of those things. If y'all, it's just coming up, if you want to delay it far as we, because it's not something that's got to be done tonight. We don't want to push anything on you. So make sure everybody understands before we move forward. Okay. Okay. Because it's about a cent and a half you'd add to your tax rate just on that. Okay? Do I have a second to defer any action? Commissioner Ewan makes that. Any discussion on deferment? All in favor of deferring any action on this, coming for budget next month, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. I think we're ready for the notaries if I...
We got a 3A, B, and C.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Item 3A, this is Finance Director. These are 101 General Fund Budget Amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, to approve those amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Ewan, seconded. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval on the General Fund Budget Amendments, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
3B, 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and unanimously passed to approve those 116 amendments.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Spray, seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item C, 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Ewan, and passed unanimously to approve those amendments.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item about Highway Fund Budget Amendments? Have a motion for approval. Commissioner Ewan makes that motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Cooley makes second. Any questions, comments, or discussions on this item? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. I believe we're ready for a notary publics, Madam Clerk.
Melanie J. Reese, by Commissioner Spray. Stephanie Young Smith, by Commissioner Rolls Walter. Anna Maria Ashley, by Commissioner Bryant. Nora Kristen Gammel, by Commissioner Tackett.
Any additions to that list? Entertain a motion for approval of those. Commissioner Mitchell makes that motion for approval. Mr. Frazrand, Commissioner Frazrand, seconds that. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Floor is now open for any new business. Commissioner Ashley, I think you asked to be recognized under new business. Any objection? Any objections to the Devon Allen, three minutes to address the commission? Okay?
I've got a few things on, first of all, for the 18 that killed this monstrosity that was here today. Thank you. On a few of the other things. Cuts, it doesn't appear that there's any discussion of cutting anything. And yet, we were being asked by the Budget Committee to raise our taxes, our property taxes, by 52 cents. Nonprofits as one item. I've talked to multiple commissioners. Giving tax dollars to nonprofits amounts to theft. You should be building roads. You should be taking care of bridges. You should take care of our schools. But when you start taking money out of my pocket to give to somebody else, regardless of what it is, I think you've crossed the line, and the people I'm talking to agrees. The, it's not your position, it's not your place to be a good steward of my money when we're talking about giving it to other people, regardless of what the nonprofit is. Few quick numbers. Apparently, we're 46 cents deficit. We need 46 cents to balance the budget. We give away 500 grand to nonprofits. That's 6.9 cents. Raises at 5%, we're talking another 9 cents. Dead stop, which I don't understand why we're paying to pick up farm animals from farmers whose animals are dying. Why is that a taxpayer responsibility? That comes to 29 cents. If you subtract, if you subtract that from the 46 cents, you're down to 29 cents. We know that we've got to double it because of the, going to the schools. So you've turned a 46 cent deficit into, after you double it, you're back up to 58 cents. And those are actually cutting some things instead of continuing to spend our money on things that should not be spent on. And I know there's other cuts that could be made. These are the few things I would like to talk on. All of these amendments that was passed earlier, budget amendments, is it safe to assume that that's money that's being given to these different things?
Those are line item, budget items. It's in their budget, but towards the end of the year, sometimes they move one from what they haven't spent to somewhere that they have a deficit in it, so it's...
But still working off of that money that was already given last year.
And all of those were for, none of that had to do with nonprofits.
Okay. Now, the, somebody's got to be an adult in the room, and 18 at least voted this down today. We need to look at cutting spending before we start talking about raising people's taxes. The schools, I understand, has got $7 million in the bank, thereabouts. And yet, we keep funding more and more, and I know that law requires that whatever comes in, half has to go to the school or something to that effect. Granted, so, but we could also be cutting the spending rather than raising taxes, and then you can start talking about something more reasonable as far as if you want to talk a tax increase. And I guess that's all I've got, but I would encourage you to, you know, when you go back to the drawing board, keep what I've said in mind, because I'm not the only person thinking it. Thank you.
Any other new business? Sheriff?
Now that I've regained my composure a little bit, I've given a lot of thought to what has transpired here tonight as far as my part of it. And there is, there is a person I would love to recommend to fill this position until the midterm election next year, if that is permissible.
You got the floor.
Then it's permissible. Chief Deputy Joyce McConnell has been with the department going on 31 years. She has been through every step of the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, from a corrections officer to on-the-road deputy to investigator to the child sex abuse investigator, started Junior's House, has numerous accolades behind her. And she is one of my chief deputies. She's not going to run for sheriff at the end of that one-year term, which to me makes sense, because that does not put y'all in a position to pick sides for who is going to run in the next term. That way, in next year, during the sheriff's election, you haven't picked a side. She is more than capable of running that department. She is more than capable of making Lincoln County a good sheriff. And everybody out there, well, not everybody, most everybody out there thinks a whole lot of her. And she is very capable of doing this job, and I would like to recommend her, when you are studying on who you're going to replace me with, I would recommend that you give her some serious, serious consideration. So with that being said, thank you very much for your time and patience, and I appreciate it.
Joyce, why don't you come up? There may be some people that don't know who you are.
For those that don't know me, I am Joyce McConnell. I started the Sheriff's Department back in 1992. I started as a corrections officer and have slowly, over 30 years, worked myself up to chief deputy. It is bittersweet tonight because it makes me very sad to see someone that I respect and love so much. But I am honored. I would be very humbled, and I would do the very best that I could to continue the legacy that Sheriff Blackwilder has left us with.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
I hadn't said it yet, Ricky. Any other new business come for the commission? Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye. We're adjourned.